Good gentlemen, and welcome members of the public to today's founding development control meeting. It's Wednesday, the 17th of November. Can I just draw the members of the public's attention to the sheet which you should have been given on the way in with useful information? Can I just remind you that this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed and later will be added to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. And then, as the other important thing to say too is that we turn our phones off or put them on silent. And there are instructions there about the fire evacuation procedure. We're not expecting any tests today. So, once you hear the alarm, it's for real. Sorry, I'll just go through the agenda. The first item on the agenda is apologies and deputy members.
Thank you Chair, apologies for absence received from councillor Reed with councillor Cunningham deputising. Thank you.
Right, and I always forget something and I've forgotten to introduce the members sitting around the table. The councillors all have their names in front of them. And then, we have the case officer always sits in the seat over there. Currently, for the first case, it's Nicola Clayton. Then, next to me is Julie Pinnock, the Service Leader for the Built Environment. On the other side of the vice chair, there's Fiona Sutherland, who's the legal representative. And we have Claire Buchanan, who looks after the clerking side and controls the clock and all those sorts of things. So, apologies to deputy members, we've done disclosures of interests. Councillor Rutter?
In respect of item number eight, and I probably need to repeat this when we get there. I have a personal but non prejudicial interest in that I know the applicants, but I have had no discussions at all with them over this or any other of their applications.
Thank you, and I have the same personal but non prejudicial interest. The applicants are known to me, but I haven't discussed the suffocation with them.
This is, I know, I know from this as well. So, I guess I'd lead to that list. I mean, in every way, anyone has been to the council since the decision, and it must not.
Any councillor that's been here a while will remember the applicant, but the new councillors probably don't think that bit. But we all have personal interests, but not prejudicial. Moving on then with the agenda. Minutes of the last meeting on the 21st of October. You could all have your agreement, members.
Agreed.
Thank you. And then, we have an update sheet. And could we accept the update sheet as an addendum to the report?
Agreed.
Thank you. And that takes us on then to the business items. And the first one is Fairgall, Black Horse Lane, Shedfield. And its case number 20/02165/FL. And this is a retrospective application for raised terrace and relocation of the garage. So, the case officer is Nicola Clayton, and she will start with her presentation. Thank you, Nicola.
Thank you Chair. The application at Fairgall Black Horse Lane was deferred from the last planning committee for a site visit which was closed last week. So, the application is the retrospective application for a raised terrace and relocation of the garage. Here we have... Is that any better? Thank you. So, starting with the location plan and the block plan and the site here out in red. Here we can see the garage, the raised terrace and adjoining properties. Here we have the elevations of the raised terrace. Showing in the brown colour here, we can see that the raised terrace goes all the way around the property. And at the back, opens up to a seating area. A photograph here taken from the rear garden of Fairgall. Here we have the photograph of the properties Fairgall and Fairview. And here we have photos taken from the raised terrace facing onto the adjoining property Springs. This photo is taken from the driveway of the Springs facing onto the property Fairgall. Here we can just about see the corner of the property where the garage is located and the raised terrace facing down the side of the property. And here we have some more photos taken from the rear of the site. Here we can see the patio area and we can see the property Springs in the background. Here's another photo taken for the raised terrace at the rear of the dwelling. This paddock area that's not within the red edge of this type of application, but it is a parcel of land owned by the applicant. So, here we have the elevations of the front and the rear of the garage. We're looking at double garage with a store to the side. And here we have the side elevations. They're so overhanging at the front. The garage is located at the front of the property. The application came forward. The garage is actually being pulled closer to the property. We're looking at just under two metres from the boundary edge of the Springs. And we can see the retaining wall of the garage following from the site visit. The floor level had been completed since these photos were taken. And here, just another property taken from the front of the Springs to see where the location of the garage would be sitting. And the officer's recommendation is to improve with conditions.
Thank you very much. We move on to the public participation. We just have one public speaker today. Alice Drew, good morning. And Ms Drew, you're speaking on behalf of Mr and Mrs Walsh, who's the name, if I'm correct.
Yes, it is. Thank you Chair, good morning members. My name is Alice Drew. I'm a planning consultant at Southern Planning Practice. I'm representing Mr and Mrs Walsh, who reside at the Spring next to Fairgall. He strongly objects to the application. Despite being asked twice by enforcement to stop the unauthorised development, the applicants continue to keep building without planning permission, showing complete disregard for the planning system. The photography of the site has not been shown on any of the plans. The application site is much higher than the Spring and significant infilling has taken place. No references to major engineering works which have taken place to facilitate the construction of the purpose of the garage. The submitted block plans do not show the correct footprints of the buildings as the map is from 2015. The Spring has been extended since this time and is now closer to the application site. However, I understand site visits taking place, so you'll have a better understanding of the site following this. Whilst the officer has acknowledged that the terrace creates overlooking, I strongly disagree that such overlooking would not be harmful. Due to the levels and proximity, people using the terrace would have an unrestricted view into the Spring. The overlooking would be heightened once the container is removed and the terrace would overlook the laundry bathroom. The overlooking and loss of privacy is unacceptable. The photographs provided to you ahead of this meeting show the direct line of sight from the terrace into my client's kitchen and dining rooms. The development results in unacceptable adverse impact on my client's property and proposes contrary to policy DM16 which requires development not to result in overlooking. The terrace at considerable height involved at Fairgall resulted in an overbearing impact to the Spring and is out of keeping with the area. Fairgall would be fully accessible without the walkways to its elevation. The garage has been brought closer to the site's boundary making it closer to the Spring and impacting on the health of the mature boundary hedgerow, the light entry and the outlook from my client's property. The ridge height of the garage is much higher than indicated on the submitted street view. The scale and massing are inappropriate for an accessory building. The siting of the garage is to allow vehicles to turn. However, if development had been built to approve the garage will not need to be set back any further. The proposal is contrary to policy DM16 which requires development to respond positively to the character and appearance of the area. In summary, in retrospective development is contrary to the development plan. The proposals would have a significant adverse impact on the residential amenity and the enjoyment of Mr and Mrs Walsh's property through overlooking, loss of privacy and loss of outlook. If the application were to be approved, two conditions should be attached. The first is a condition which requires a drainage team to assess the change in levels and increase in car standings. The second condition should require a comprehensive hard and soft landscaping scheme providing robust screening on the southern side of the terrace. However, the proposal is clearly contrary to the development plan and should therefore be refused. I urge members to uphold the local planning policies and refuse the application.
Thank you very much, well timed. It could be that the members of the committee would like to ask you some clarification points. Members? Any questions for you? Councillor Rutter?
Thank you Chair, thank you very much. I did notice on the site visit that we could see across into the dining area although it was quite a long way away from the side of the patio area, the sort of side access. But is that, that's not the only window into that room, is it? Am I right in thinking there are patio doors on the other side?
Exactly opposite that window, isn't it? It's even better.
Just a window, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Councillor Cunningham?
Thank you Chair. You said in terms of mitigation of the overlooking that you would look for a development of screening, natural screening, edge rows, trees, whatever. Why do you go down that route rather than a screen, physical screen of some sort?
It could be, so that's why I suggested hard and soft landscaping. So, you could have some kind of potentially a wall or hurdles or something significant to reduce that overlooking.
Thank you, any further questions? Councillor Wilson?
Yes, sir. Mr Drew, the window that is overlooked, what exactly is that a window of? Is it, you said a kitchen or is it all?
Yeah, so it's the kitchen and dining room.
That's kitchen?
Yes, and the dining entrance.
Okay, going to the sink and looking at that window, is it?
Yes, I believe so. Yes.
Yeah. So, the concern is that somebody can stand at the end, which you can see in the photograph there, and look down into a kitchen window. Is that the case?
Yes, absolutely, it's the kitchen and dining area.
And is that the sign when that hedge is growing up?
I would imagine so, yeah.
It is?
Yes.
Thank you, any further questions? So, thank you very much, Ms Drew. Thank you for coming along today. So, we move to the report. And it's just a two-page report. So, questions on anything, members? Councillor Fell?
Thank you Chair. It says on page 19, given the existing relationship of the rear of the property along with a section of Black Horse Lane, it's not considered that the raised terracing to the rear result in any significant loss of residence and amenity. Now, I stood there and actually watched them, these people having their breakfast. So, explain to me, hey, that's no, no loss of amenity?
Nicola?
Okay, thank you. The line in the report in relationship to this was that a lot of the properties there have a higher up at the back and overlook onto the paddock area. I do appreciate that as you walk around the property, there is a relationship with the adjoining property, the Springs. But from this actual where you would sit at the rear of the property, I don't think that that does result in a significant loss of essential amenity to my fellow properties.
Well, if I lived there, I certainly would be objected to this completely.
Councillor Cunningham?
Nicky, thank you for that. Can you tell us what the increased height of the terracing is to that which is permitted under the previous application?
Just to see, I've actually got the drawings here so we can have a look at the relationship before the original application. So, here we can see the garage remains the same. Okay, so originally, the application was showing that it wasn't really taking into consideration the change of ground levels. Like, we've got the property here showing it was more like a pathway route rather than actually the terracing that goes round. Just trying to see if I can find it. Yeah, that's a bit difficult, I guess. Yes. Okay, I think you're going to be going next to the one that was the location. She doesn't show the terrace because they weren't appreciating the high level changes.
Could you, would you be able to tell us just if it's one metre or one and a half, two metres higher than the original ladder?
Have I timed, I'm going to draw it and I'm going to need to take a measurement because I have actually got the measurement out. It's the drawing, the original drawing. No, this one. I was just going to take the retaining wall from the original plans. Apologies, I'm not going to be able to answer the question specifically because the drawings have been pulled from the original drawings. So, as Julie already said, that they won't be accurate to scale.
Okay, I can understand that. But could you give me some idea maybe that it was one metre, is one metre higher than the terrace?
I'm only looking at the...
In general terms?
In general terms. If we can put the presentation back to the drawing at the rear. Keep going on the... Keep mentioning, sorry about this. Sorry, let's keep that one. One down, Julie. And then we can see the fence panels here. So, I would say for them that if we're looking at the screening here, we could get here from an estimate of how high it is at this end. Just that sort of clear fence panel. I would say, yeah, I would say just that short, two metres this end?
And that would represent an increase in height from the original approved height of how much, in general?
So, on the original plans, it didn't show the terracing at all. It showed that it would have been a flat site. So, I would suggest that at the front of the site is a flat site. And then I would say the ground level change would be from naught at the front to two metres at the back. As you've got, it's been built up to be a level surface.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything? Councillor Wilson?
Okay, Chair. Sorry, Chair. I'm a little bit amused. The application for the house itself was granted. And the implication from the drawings is it's a flat site. Didn't anyone visit that site to see that it wasn't flat? And that house in a flat, it just couldn't have worked. It needs a retaining wall?
Chair, I don't think we can answer that. The decision was issued back in 2016. And we are now just in a position where we have to look at whether we can believe this can be regularised based on the application front of us today. I think it's, these things sometimes aren't quite tricky. I think we've been to the site, we've seen the levels, we've seen how it's been built. And we're just going to bear our assessment on that. I can't really look back to 2016 and see what happened, you know, in terms of that site visit and assessment now, today, Chair, I'm afraid.
I'm a little bit concerned about this. The aspect of overlooking, to me, you could even solve by screening. If the house is as intended, and that is what we're led to understand, then the only objection is, seems to be, the fact that people haven't realised how high it is and the overlooking. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Yes. Right, okay. Could that be solved by screening? When you've got screening at one side of the balcony or whatever, couldn't there be a similar screening at the other end? That would make sure that this kitchen wasn't overlooked.
So, we're talking sort of fencing rather than natural screening, are we?
Well, there could be a fence actually where the hedge is. It could be a screen actually on the edge of the veranda, balcony, whatever. This is not insurmountable. Because it would be impossible to remove that balcony without impacting on the building itself, which has permission to be there.
We can add a condition requiring the boundary.
That could be done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Rutter?
Thank you Chair. Yes, I was just looking at the landscape treatment is already covered by the previous application. I did notice that two trees have been planted in that gap to try and mitigate that overlooking. But I would be delighted to see a further condition that referred to further landscaping and strengthening of that boundary treatment, if that's possible. The object also mentioned a condition about drainage, so concerned about runoff and so on from the built-up area. So, is it possible to have a condition added about drainage and extra, an extra check that anything that can be done is done to mitigate that? Please, thank you.
Chairman, I think we think that that would have been covered under the original planning permission back in 2016. I'm not really sure how we could phrase a condition to ask for a check. I'm not sure that would be reasonable.
The problem was planning...
Sorry, please, our legal officer would have anything to add on that.
I think the problem is that the garage that was given permission was at a much lower level. And this garage is much higher and closer to the boundary. And therefore, it's, I think that unless the condition was convinced, the previous condition which has been discharged, would have properly looked at the changes and therefore addressed any issues. I don't think it's unreasonable to just have an extra check on that. Thank you Chair.
I'm just, because this is retrospective, I'm just wondering how a condition of that nature would actually work and whether, as Julie says, whether it would be reasonable.
Sorry Chair, they haven't actually finished building the garage yet. So, although it's retrospective in terms of the positioning and the height of it, it's not fully retrospective in terms of it being completely built. Because obviously, there's a lot of work still to be done at the front of the house. And I'm sure that would create some change because it doesn't look as if that has been put in place yet. So, I would generally thought that sort of condition would have been a commencement or at least prior to commencement of development of that part of the building. I think that's the difficulty. If there is a problem, then it's going to be rather difficult to enforce. I don't know whether Julie's got any further thoughts on that.
Chairman, however, I'm just wondering whether those sort of matters would also be picked up in regular regulations as well, as they, you know, as the works have progressed. I am struggling to think of a reasonable condition. But ultimately, I suppose if members did want that, we could condition that no further development takes place into a surface water strategy as been submitted. But I think, you know, the trouble with that condition is, as Fiona and Solomon just said, is the enforceability of that given the retrospective nature of the application. I think it's something we might have to delegate to your officers if you're minded to approve or us to check back on the earlier planning permission and try and dovetail something in if there is the discrepancy that you're concerned about. Or, and we could check building control as well. So, whether that's something you'd mind to delegate to your officers to check that and add a condition if that's appropriate with, you know, perhaps in consultation with the Chair.
I'd be happy with that, Chair, thank you.
Councillor Benter?
My questions have been answered already, thank you. So, I've got a few questions. The terrace which is on the side, is that narrower than the terrace at the back?
Yes.
So, the point of the terrace was to make the property wheelchair friendly, probably?
Yes.
So, you probably wouldn't be sitting on the side. I take the point that the next door neighbour feels that it's, he's got a loss of privacy. But if you were to sit on the terrace, would you sit at the back?
You'd sit at the back, yes.
And then the punishment council have objected to the access, new access on Solomon's Lane. But I believe that is outside the application site?
Yes Chair.
So, we can't take that into consideration today. I'm just looking at the other objections. So, where are we on the landscaping? If we were to suggest some sort of screening on the neighbour's side? Or are we leaving that to officers to find the most appropriate screening?
Chair, I think we could suggest a condition as there's anything Clayton had said, suggesting that we just ask for further soft planting on that boundary between those particular points to reinforce that part where there was clearly, I mean, there has been some plants from there. I think we saw that on site, didn't we? But just to check that that is appropriate screen or whether we need to add something else in there to get a further screening. But I think it would just be around that boundary edge check where we saw on the side the raised terrace around the side of the property and the boundary treatment between.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on the report? The debate? Thank you, the debate. Councillor Rutter?
Thank you Chair. And this is the case of an existing permission which has given, perhaps not properly taking into account the topography or at least minimising the impact of it. But we are where we are with this and an existing permission is a huge planning consideration. I think that with the additional conditions that we've just been discussing, hopefully, checking on the drainage issue and issuing a condition if necessary and on the extra landscaping. These will mitigate the concerns of the neighbour. And so, I am content to support the officer recommendation of those two extra conditions.
Thank you. Any further debate?
Yes, I too. I think I've written down we are where we are, which is just what the vice chair has said. And some of it's unfortunate that the garage was given permission in an area where they couldn't get in and access it. But we all went on a site visit last week. And I'm personally satisfied that the additional conditions over drainage checking and landscape improvements will solve some of the feeling of overlooking for the neighbour. And as I've sort of asked questions, it's much wider at the back. The view at the back is beautiful. Why would you sit on the side of the house? I mean, the terrace is there just so to make it wheelchair accessible. So, I too will be supporting the approval of the application.
So, this application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour of approving the application, please show.
That's eight, Chair.
Thank you. Against?
One, Chair.
Chair, did you just want Julie Pinnock to read out the conditions to stick them down that it would be subject to those conditions?
Thank you Chair. So, I think the recommendation to approve with two additional conditions... conditions, well, definitely one and possibly a second, which delegated to you and I to look into. But one, that there's a landscape, a further landscape condition that looks to reinforce that boundary treatment between the two properties where there's clearly a gap that we saw on the side, although there was some tree planting gone in there. And the second is that we explore further what we approved as part of the drainage strategy, the surface water, as part of the discharge of conditions. And if we think there's a gap there, we'll ask for a further strategy on that. And we'll agree those are in a reasonably appropriate timeframe. And we'll clear those with you, Chair, if members are minded to accept those two points.
Thank you. I think members are aware of those two conditions which are not worded yet, but that's the sentiment of them. And the settlement application is approved. Thank you very much. And then we'll just wait for the various stations to be able to sign the time before moving on to the next application. Anyway, I can see the clock. I've been on the screen.
Yes, carefully, when I put it on the screen, it reverses time back to front.
The time's still slumming, my bad, sir. The time's still zero on there, isn't it? Great, thank you.
Apologies for delaying. We're just checking that everybody is here who has booked to be here. Can I just draw your attention to the white sheet which should have been given on the way in concerning details of recording, live streaming and video recording being put on the councils usually, and mobile phones and so on, with fire instructions. We're not expecting any practice today.
Chair, everyone who's here in the room, there is one person that hasn't arrived that we were expecting, but I'm speaking for the members. We'll send them in if they do arrive. But they are a spectator anyway.
All right. Do they come in?
Yes, Chair, they arrive. But they haven't arrived yet. They won't give them a time. They're just on the morning session. There is, Chair.
The floor?
Yes, Chair.
So we are now on agenda item seven, which is case number 21/01322/FUR. This is the Long Barn or Sheepshire Bishop Sutton Road at Alesford. And the application is a decision on amending condition number two from the approved plans. The case officer is Cat Watson, and she must start with her presentation.
Thank you, Chair. The application is for rearrangement of the internal floor space to provide a larger kitchen and server area. So here we've got the existing site plan. So...
Sorry.
Presentation on the master screen, Chair.
I'm not sure why it's... I'm not sure why it's not displaying.
We're just sorting out the presentations from members to see.
I'm not... I'm not sure why it's not displaying.
You think of things or release a screenplay, don't you?
I'm in Teams. Teams is up.
This technology is wonderful when it works.
It was working on.
And that's what we're waiting on. So sorry for the delay.
That's it.
Thank you, Chair. I'll start from the beginning. So the application is for the internal reorganisation of space to enable a... Sorry, I was distracted by that. To enable a larger kitchen and server in the existing building. So here we have the existing site plan. So we can see we've got the main building and then parking and garden area at the rear. And this is the site plan that was approved on the previous consent in 2019. And here we can see that the internal organisation of the space, the cafe seating areas are in blue. And you can see just here is the kitchen and the server area. Here is the proposed floor plan. So this is just a schematic plan to show where a thing would be. So here we've got new server positions and kitchen, server here and kitchen on the other side. And then this denotes the number of, position of the tables and chairs. And here is the same plan, and I've colour-coded it. So the blue areas are the cafe seating areas. So we've got an area outside and an area inside. And then the purple areas are the server just here and the kitchen on the right-hand side. And then here we have some photos of the existing setup. On the left-hand side, we've got the kitchen area. Right-hand side, right-hand side, we've got the server area. And there's some more images of the server. That concludes my presentation. Thank you, Chair. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So we move now to the public speaking. And the first person to speak was the objector, Simon Evans.
Chairman, I'm sorry, but Miss Evans is unable to appear today due to family business in the home.
So no one's speaking on his behalf?
I hope to cover the points, Chair.
Okay. So we'll move on then to the Ward Counselor, Counselor Margot Power. And when you're ready, Counselor Power, you've got five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Be reassured, I'm not going to read the whole of the local plan. But I do want to draw your attention to MTR-2 on page 62 of the local plan. It refers to commercial growth being consistent with our role in the hierarchy of retail centres. Development should not have a harmful impact on the centre. Retail opportunities should be within existing settlement boundaries in the first instance, or they should meet a community need. Development should be appropriate in scale and design. Now, page 12 of the applicant's planning statement refers to this making of the kitchen three times bigger than it is at the moment. Setting aside the efficiency gains that will be obtained by this development, this is going to result in preparation of twice as much food. This is no longer a cafe attached to a shop. If you look at the previous Long Barn applications, you are looking at a continual expansion of this out-of-town shopping destination. And this is a nail in the coffin of the shops in a market town. The shops, the cafes, the retail outlets are what makes a market town special and economically successful. I recall at a previous Long Barn planning application, somebody said, I've visited and it's a very nice place. All the shops in Alesford and the cafes and the restaurants are very nice places. But by allowing this development of an out-of-town shopping outlet, which is what it's becoming, you are damaging that market town. And that is contrary to our own local plan. I think we all spent many, many hours and many thousands of pounds developing our local plan. It is contrary to MTR-2. And I'm asking you to reject this application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor Power. Members, any questions for Counselor Power on clarification?
Counselor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Counselor Power. The number of cupboards, the number of places in the cafe, I understand before the Covid situation was 90. And now there's a condition restricting that, I'm just trying to find it, to 80. So that's 10 less than before Covid. So we're restricting the number of people who can go to the cafe, or who could be served in the cafe, to less than pre-Covid numbers. So does that not mean that MTR-2 is not being broken in your consideration by this particular application?
Your commission chair, I would argue that the extension of the kitchen means that people will eat more while they are there. You're looking at increasing the range of foods that can be provided, going from a cafe to a restaurant, I would argue. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Pearson?
Yes, Counselor Power, as I understand it, this garden centre, similar to many others within which the district, has a restaurant, sells plants, also sells other children's goods. Why are you suggesting that this is in some way different to many of the garden centres in its impact on the local township?
Chairman, this is an out-of-town shopping destination in close proximity to a market town. It is not, I think if you have visited the site, and I think the Chair has, you will see that there is not the predominance of plants that I would expect from a garden centre. It is far more an outlet for goods. And in fact, one of the recent planning applications extended the range of goods that could be sold on the site. Thank you.
May I ask, Counselor Knight?
Yes.
Have you been down to the garden centre at Bradbridge, or the garden centre down Titch, two garden centres down Titchfield? They're not different from what is proposed here. And I still cannot understand why. So asking us to turn this application down, which is not changing the size of it, is changing the size of the kitchen, driven by the photograph, or maybe the kitchen a little more hygienic, which is safe for the customers. The number of covers are limited to 80, which I think is smaller than the existing dining area. But would it not be a little perverse, the factor of plenty of residents in the district, if we turn this down?
Counselor Pearson, I didn't want to interrupt you, but I don't think comparing it to other garden centres is relevant in this case. But I would allow Counselor Power to answer Counselor Pearson's question.
Thank you, Chairman. I have visited one of those garden centres. I would point out that they are not in close proximity to a market town. One of the problems we have in Alesford is that people have difficulty parking in the centre. If they see an out-of-town location just 200 yards down the road, they will go there instead. And this is why MTR-2 is part of our local plan. It is about preserving our market towns as the predominant retail outlet and rejecting out-of-town shopping destinations in close proximity.
Thank you. Any further questions for Counselor Power? No, you're off the hook now then, Counselor Power. Then the last public speaker is the supporter and applicant, Jane Marsden.
Yes, that's me. Good morning. I'm Jane Marsden. I'm the director of Long Barn. Long Barn has been trading in Alesford for 12 years now. We opened in November 2009, our birthday week. The business has grown over the years, and we now employ 45 staff in total. And yes, our cafe is a popular part of our business. We opened the cafe in 2013, and it too has grown steadily over the eight years. So this growth has naturally put pressure on our space and facilities. And over time, we've adapted and made use of existing facilities and spare corners of the barn for service and storage. Our tea and coffee is stored in our HR manager's office, our cleaning facilities in a cupboard on a landing, and the drinks are in a basement warehouse. All of these areas are two flights of stairs up, a good distance away from the core cafe space. And yes, as you can see from the photos, our kitchen facilities are in need of upgrading. There is currently inadequate space for storage, food prep and plating of orders, which has forced other fragmented areas of the building to be used for this purpose. And this is not ideal and is not efficient. So the nut of this application today is that it does not seek to expand our existing business, but rather to meet an operational need and make the cafe more resilient behind the scenes. We are applying to reconfigure the cafe seating, the kitchen, the storage and wash-up areas into one joined-up space. And this will be of enormous help to our staff who are stretched now to cover the spaces it stands. The current planning permission has the cafe seating divided into two distinct areas, two separate buildings connected by two narrow corridors. And this has happened as a result of the cafe, yes, developing organically over time. We are not asking to increase the size of the cafe seating space. And as we have just said, there will actually be slightly fewer jobs in the cafe than pre-Covid as a result of providing a more spacious layout. We are seeking to increase the size of the kitchen, the wash-up and server areas. This is not to expand the size of the menu, but to make the preparation a bit more efficient. All of these works will take... All of these works will take place within the existing buildings. And furthermore, by working with the existing size restrictions and respecting the conditions of the 2019 planning permission, we will not intensify the use of the site. So to sum up, the proposal simply seeks a reconfiguration of existing approved uses to provide an improved, more resilient and safer working environment for our staff. So please support this application and allow us to invest in our facilities and make the café a more sustainable part of business. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs Marsden. Members, any questions or clarifications? No. I just want to ask, because we had applications from the Longbarn several times. And we did mention, and this follows on from councillor Power's point, that you would encourage knowledge of what was available shop-wise in Orsford, the main town. Does that happen?
It does happen. We have maps in the toilets, we have a map that we created and designed outside the building and that points out all the highlights of Orsford. And could I just say that since we have been operating in the last couple of years, two fantastic new cafes have opened in Orsford and they're doing really well. And while we were closed by putting some glazing into our space, we were referring people up to those cafes. And when we're, if we got issues with our cafe, we would send people up into town. All of my staff are from Orsford, I live in Orsford, my children grew up in Orsford. And we are here to support the town and we know that we do that.
Thank you. Yes, I have seen the map, so thank you. Thank you for that information. Members, the report has just two pages, page 42 and 43 is then the conditions. So questions on anything? Councillor Cumming?
Thank you, Chair. You said earlier on that you're maintaining the limit in terms of the space for the café and server and restaurant operation to 17%, yet at the same time, the town council has said that you're increasing from 17%. Can you comment on that?
I can't quote you the actual metres square, but I know that has been submitted in some considerable detail to the planning officer and they're reassured that we are not exceeding that space.
Councillor Cumming, and members, we are, questions for the officer, not the applicant. But have you any further questions for the officer?
I think he wants to ask that question. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I do have the floor space existing and proposed for the seating areas. So it's currently about 272 square metres, which includes the indoor and outdoor seating areas. And proposed would be 265, so it's slightly less. It works out as 16.3%, so it's within 17% allowed for the café seating.
Thank you for that application. Any more questions for the case officer? No, so debate? Councillor Otter?
Thank you, Chair. I'm afraid the genie's out of the bottle as regards to Longbarn, but actually I think that's what has been done in terms of their attempt to encourage people to explore Orsford and use the wider facilities of the town is laudable. The covers are going to be restricted to 80. And the time that the café is going to be open is still restricted to 5.30 in the afternoon. So nobody's going to be going there for a three-course dinner any time soon. Unless they have it at four o'clock in the afternoon, which you might do in Orsford, I suppose. But I see absolutely no reason why we should refuse this application. And I wish the café all good things to come when it's got a much bigger and more efficient and legitimate kitchen. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Leany.
Thank you, Chair. This is a tickle drum because we are looking at MTR-2. And I do take the point the councillor Power made about out-of-town shopping attracting people away from the city to the town centre. And it is a very important thing that we keep activities together with the town centre. I think that by restricting this down to the same number of covers and limiting the opening time, I can obviously really see too much of a reason to refuse it.
Thank you. MRA-2 has been much mentioned today. So Cat, could you just give us some updates on that?
Thank you, Chair. In this instance, MTR-2 isn't a relevant policy. The place outside the settlement boundary in countryside. So it would be MTR-4 which covers development in the countryside. And that allows for existing businesses to expand. It's not expanding as we've already heard, but the redevelopment and the reorganisation of the internal café space would not be harmful and be prohibited by MTR-4. So just again, MTR-2 is not a relevant policy and we're considering this application. Thank you.
So looking at the representation from the new Orsford Town Council, they say that this is against the proposal, is against the City Council planning policy for development outside the town. Want to make a comment on that?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have MTR-4 in front of me, but I know that it does allow for supporting existing businesses in the countryside. So that would include retail and sort of most destination places that people can visit and including the café business. So yes, I would say again, MTR-2 in this instance is relevant. But MTR-4 does cover development in the countryside and allow existing businesses to be supported if they wish to improve their offer.
Thank you. Just reading from MTR-4, but I'm saying it should be MTR-3. No, it's MTR-4. So one of the bullet points is that what could be allowed is expansion or redevelopment of existing buildings to facilitate the expansion on-site of established businesses or to meet an operational need, which might be the case here. Are we still on, are we on debate? I've got some other questions. Any more questions? No. So now we're into debate. I'm in debate. Councillor Evans?
Thank you, Chair. I noticed that there were quite a number of objections, which I read before this meeting. And they reveal a considerable degree of, I would think not too strong to say hostility to the certification. And there seemed to be a sense that, and I quote, "it was undermining the town." And a number of references were made to the fact that this business was paying agricultural rather than retail taxes. But I judge that to be completely beyond the range of consideration of the Commons Committee. And I've heard this morning that there will be no increase in hours for the café, that there will be no increase in covers and indeed from the applicant, there will be no increase in the size of the menu. And I find it therefore very hard to find any valid reason why we should not support it.
Thank you. Any further contributions to debate? Yes, we've had several applications at the Longbarn. And this is probably one of many. But it isn't to introduce new things. It's to keep to the 17%, which was allocated for the catering. There's no increase in the number of covers, but it is to promote efficiency in the preparation. I have been there and I do know the site. And when I was asked there, I did a bit of sort of rock's pop because I did actually meet people that I knew. And I asked them, "Have you come here and then you're going to go home?" And no, they wouldn't normally have come to Orsford. And I agree with councillor Power, it is a delightful market town. No, they were coming here to have a cup of coffee and then they were going on into Orsford. So I don't think that has been considered really because I think having a facility like this does encourage people to go on into Orsford. And the Longbarn doesn't sell everything that you can buy in Orsford. So you know, meat and whatever. So I think it sort of encourages people to go on. I understand the concerns about out-of-town shopping, but you know, I applaud the applicant's efforts to encourage people to know what is in Orsford town and for them to go on down there. So I too don't have a problem with the application and I shall be recommending it for approval. So we're now to the point of voting. This application has been recommended for approval. No new conditions, I don't think. Those in favour, please show it.
That's not unanimous, Chair.
So that application is approved. Thank you very much. So we're going to take just a very short break. For those who need a coffee break or whatever. So we'll meet again at quarter to ten. Ten to the right, Chair.
Thanks for your questions.
Good morning and welcome to members of the public who have arrived for this application. Can I just draw your attention to the sheet that she should have been given? Lots of information about the meeting. Most important probably are the fact that this is being recorded and live streamed. And it is also video recorded and that will be uploaded on the council's YouTube website after the meeting, or the channel, council's YouTube channel. Mobile phones, I'm sure everyone has turned them off or put it on fire. And fire evacuation, we're not expecting any practices today. So please make sure that you understand the evacuation procedure. So we move on to agenda item eight, which is reference number, case number 21/02063/eqr. And that's Homel, 7 Berwick Road in Winchester. And this is...
Chair? Sorry to interrupt, Chair. May I just make a quick reiteration of my personal but non prejudicial interest in this matter? I do know the Dickens family from several years of the councillors together, because I have no, have not discussed this application with them in any way all the previous time.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to declare a personal interest as well for the same reasons. I do know the applicants and have known them for some time. But again, I haven't had any involvement or discussions with the applicants over this application. And I think anyone who's been on the council a while will perhaps want to declare councillor Pearson bitter.
Yes.
Councillor Leving bitter. And I don't think anybody else will probably know the applicants. No. Okay, so this application is for a two-storey rear extension, first floor front extension, alterations to the roof, demolition and replacement of the garage, erection of two-bedroom, two-storey dwelling to the west of the existing dwelling with associated additional vehicle access. The case officer is Cat Watson and she will start the proceedings with her presentation.
Thank you, Chair. The proposal is for the renovation and extension of the existing dwelling and the erection of a new two-bedroom dwelling to the south-west of the existing property. Here we can see the existing floor plans. So on the left-hand side, we've got the ground floor plan. The right-hand side, we've got the first floor plan. And then the existing elevation, so at the top, we've got the south elevation, which is the front. And the bottom is the north or rear elevation. At the top, we've got the west or side elevation. And the bottom, we've got the east, also side elevation. And here we have the proposed site plan. So we can see on the right-hand side, you can see the existing dwelling, which is proposed to be extended. You might be able to see there's a dotted line where the cursor is, that everything that protrudes from there is a proposed extension. On the left-hand side, we've got a proposed new dwelling, two-bedroom, two-storey dwelling. The existing access on the right-hand side is to be retained and used by the extended existing dwelling. And then there's another proposed access just to the south-west of that, which will serve the new dwelling. And here we can see the proposed ground floor plan. So on the right-hand side, this is the ground floor of the existing dwelling. So you can see the extension to the rear and an integral or attached garage at the rear. And to the left-hand side, you've got the proposed dwelling. And here are the first floor plans. So to the right-hand side, you can see the first floor of the existing dwelling and the roof of the garage to the rear. And then on the left-hand side, we've got the proposed dwelling sharing two bedrooms at first floor level. And then we've got the roof plan. So on the right-hand side, again, the existing dwelling. On the roof of the garage is proposed to put solar PV panels. And on the left-hand side, we've got the proposed dwelling, again, a number of solar PV panels. And then the proposed elevations. So at the top, we've got the existing dwelling on the right-hand side. On the left-hand side, we've got the proposed dwelling. Then at the bottom, we've got the north or rear elevation. And the existing dwelling with the proposed garage is on the left-hand side. And then we've got the right-hand side, which is the rear of the proposed dwelling. And again, we've got side elevations, the top side. The top image is the, shows the proposed dwelling, just here with the cursor. And then behind it, you can see the existing extended dwelling with the garage at the rear. And then the east side, this is all the existing extended dwelling with the garage. And here we have some photographs from within and around the site. So the top photograph shows the front of the existing dwelling. It's taken from within the garden of the, front garden of the existing dwelling, looking from the south-west. And then the bottom right is the front, again, of the existing dwelling, but looking from the south-east within the garden. Then in the top left, we've got a side or western elevation. Bottom right, we've got the north elevation looking, and that's the rear, looking from within the back garden. And then the existing street view. Here we can see the existing access, the existing dwelling. There's already a garage to the rear. And then the boundary treatment, which is a hedge with, that's grown over, a dilapidated wire fence. Here we've got the street view looking from the north-east. So if we look at the right-hand side of the picture, we can just see the access as existing. You can also see the boundary. And then beyond the boundary, we can see the new boundary fence that's been erected for the new dwelling 15 A Berwick Close. And then the front boundary, again, looking from the south-west. So we can see, just see the access existing. And then here we can see the neighbouring fence at 15, 15A Berwick Close. And then the, where it sort of links in with the existing boundary treatment at number seven, Berwick Road. That is my presentation, Chair. My recommendation is to permit, subject to the conditions contained within the report and amendments within the update sheet. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So we move now to the public speaking. And the first person is Gina Charrett. Good morning. Oh, yes, see you all still morning. And when you're ready, you have three minutes. The clock is over there.
Just click.
I'll just press the middle button here.
Yes. Hello?
Hello.
Thank you, Chair, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Members will be aware that a previous planning application on this land for a new house was refused by the council and that decision was supported by an inspector with the appeal dismissed. In dismissing the previous proposal, where the new house was to be located on the northern boundary to real the existing house, the inspector stated, and I quote, "The new dwelling would appear hemmed in on two of its boundaries and sit within proximity to the existing property, thus resulting in a cramped and congested form of development, which would adversely affect the character and appearance of the area." Bearing in mind that the previous scheme placed the new house behind that which exists, the inspector still had enough concern to conclude that the proposed dwelling would appear, and I quote, "awkward and trapped from the prevailing pattern of frontage development in the area." How can it possibly follow, therefore, that by placing the new house onto the western boundary, now in full view of Berwick Road, that this would resolve this previously identified conflict and now respect the prevailing pattern of development in the area? Apart from remedying the situation, the new planning application simply highlights how cramped the arrangement would be. how cramped the arrangement would be and the devastating effect it would have when viewed from Berrick Road and the overbearing effect on the houses in Berrick Close. As residents, we may not always agree with decisions of this committee, but at the very least, we would expect that the consideration of planning applications and the use of local plan policies such as CP fourteen are applied consistently. And in this instance, to be consistent can only mean that the revised proposals are refused. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It could be that members of the committee have some questions of clarification for you. Members, any questions from Liz Charret? No. Thank you very much for coming along today. Do stay where you are if you wish, unless you've got to get away, have you? Yeah, okay. Thank you. And so the next person on the list, well, there are two people. They are supporters, there's Jeremy Tyrrell, the agent, and Colin Dickens, the applicant. You have three minutes in total. And so it's up to you how you share that three minutes, but I will have to stop you after three minutes. So have you decided who's going first?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'll be going first and my client, Colin Dickens, is here, appealing to answer questions as required.
And there's a clock there and you have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Chair and members. I'm Jeremy Tyrrell of T Two Architects, the agent for this application. Could I have the first slide? Yes, thank you. Some of you may recall the previous application for an additional dwelling on this site, which was dismissed at appeal. The main issue being the citing of the proposed dwelling to the rear of the existing and how this would negatively affect the character and appearance of the area, as well as being overbearing to the neighbours, in particular those to the rear. The inspector made reference to the appeal decision of the recently constructed house at fifteen A Berrick Close and how an additional house to the side of the existing property is consistent with the prevailing pattern of development in the area. Since the appeal decision, we have undertaken extensive pre-application discussions with your offices to arrive at the revised scheme presented to you today. Can I have the next slide, please? The proposed dwelling is now to the side of the existing rather than to the rear. This sympathetically designed house respects the form and character of the existing dwelling with a gabled front, a pitched tiled roof and white brickwork walls. It follows the prevailing pattern of development along Berrick Road, the dual aspect with principal windows facing front and rear. Both houses are set well back from the road, in line with one another, and have good sized front and private rear gardens. Compared to the previous plan, the new house would be three quarters the size with half the plot ratio, meaning a site coverage of just fifteen percent. The new house has just one first floor obscure glazed bathroom window in its west elevation, hence there will be no overlooking of fifteen Berrick Close. The roof complements the existing dwelling and the hipped design softens the elevation presented to the neighbour. The next slide, please. Despite having moved into their new house, the owners of fifteen A Berrick Close are currently in breach of their planning condition number six, which requires three new substantial trees to be planted on their boundary to replace those which they had felled. When these conditioned trees are planted, they will completely obscure any views across this boundary. The previous scheme affected four neighbours, all of whom objected. This new proposal has received only one objection from a direct neighbour, the owners of both fifteen and fifteen A Berrick Close. Their main concern is that the new dwelling would appear overbearing when viewed from their properties. We and your officers disagree. Can I have the next slide, please? The distance between the proposed new house and fifteen A Berrick Close is eleven metres with a row of healthy eight metre high evergreen trees on the boundary, which are the dominant feature, and will almost completely obscure the view of the new dwelling.
Thank you. I'm afraid I'm going to have to ask you to stop there and we never got on to Mr Dickens. But Mr Dickens, you can of course answer any questions of clarification from members. Members, do you have any questions and clarifications? Councillor Levinge.
Thank you. Mr Tyrrell, as you know, the tax is very keen when it's on the emergency and making sure all these properties are in the efficient. What level have we got this one at?
Thanks, councillor. At the moment, we haven't specified a particular level per se. It will follow building regulations as a bare minimum. As you've noticed, we have shown some photovoltaic panels to the recent place of the proposed new dwelling and to be added to the refurbished existing dwelling. But beyond that, the specification of heating and energy efficiency rule will be determined during detailed design. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. When viewed from the road, there seem to be a substantial amount of landscaping. Yes, that's it there. So will there be any views of the proposed new dwelling from the road?
Thank you, Chair. If you could fast forward to our photo montage slide, that hopefully will be useful, this one. So this shows the proposal, the proposed house to the left of the existing in this view. It also shows the proposed new access broadly in the centre. The proposal and part of the review before the recently submitted revised site plan, which is on the update sheet, we wanted to clarify the boundary treatment to the frontage. So the proposal is to take out the existing hedge, which is, although it's quite mature, it's shrubbery, which has no particular merit. And we felt that the best solution would be to plant new hedging to the front with a new fence set behind it. Then additional creeper or shrub planting is proposed behind the fence. This would all be subject to a condition. We have discussed this with Catherine Watson about the detail of that condition. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. And could you just remind me, I think you had a slide of the views from fifteen and fifteen A Berrick Close?
Yes, the previous slide, just for clarity, if we could go back once, please. The left hand photograph here shows a view from the application site, looking southwest across the boundary towards number fifteen A Berrick Close before the trees that are referred to were felled within fifteen A's land. The photograph on the right shows the position after the trees have been felled and the newly constructed house of fifteen A Berrick Close is in position. And really, the purpose of showing these photographs was to demonstrate the, once the conditioned trees that are to be replanted at fifteen A are repanted, there will be no views across that boundary from one house to the other.
Yes, we can't take that up today, but so there will, there is planned to be more planting on that on that border at fifteen A. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Members, any other questions? No. So thank you very much, Mr Tyrrell, Mr Dickens. As we go into the report, there's principle of development and design and layout, page fifty eight and fifty nine. Any questions there? And if not, then could we go on impact on the council of the area and the neighbouring property and the rest of the report? Councillor Otten.
Thank you, Chair. I was concerned to see that the City of Winchester Trust is still objecting to this on the basis that it's overdevelopment of the site. So could you just explain to us why you disagree with that consideration and how the comments of the inspector perhaps have informed your decision on whether or not to recommend approval? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yes, with regards to the previous application, which was dismissed at appeal, Mr Tyrrell has already spoken about what the precise comments of the inspector were. But that was a back, that was basically backhand development in a very cramped position and would have adversely harmed the amenities of nearby neighbours. With the current application before us, the proposed building is a lot, is much smaller than what was proposed to the rear. It also sits in line with the existing dwelling at number seven and also the fifteen Berrick Close, the existing dwelling there. So if I can just show on this plan, it would sit right next to the existing dwelling, here's number fifteen. Oh, sorry. So, yes, it would sit right next to the existing dwelling at number seven. To the left, you can see number fifteen and at the front of that, although it's not shown on the plan, is number fifteen A, which is recently being constructed. It also runs broadly in line with number one Berrick Avenue. So it was felt that this much smaller scheme that was in line, followed, generally followed the building line of existing development in this block of properties was a lot more appropriate, wouldn't constitute overdevelopment and a more carefully considered approach to the site in general. I did have regard to the inspector's comments. I think I quoted the reason that he dismissed it. It's on page fifty nine, under impact on character of the area and neighbouring property. So I did, I did look into that decision and that did have a significant bearing on what my assessment of the current application has been. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I just ask, the City of Winchester Trust in their objection said the architectural approach of the scheme is not fully resolved. Is that a material learning consideration?
I think that's, that's the opinion of the City of Winchester Trust, which of course they're entitled to. But as Mr Tyrrell mentioned, we have gone through pre-application and where a number of, a couple of different options were considered. And then this is what's resulted from that. So I think that the, you know, the design is, it is a good design and one that I'm prepared to recommend for approval. I don't think there's anything else that would need to be done to resolve the design. Thank you.
Thank you. And you mentioned that there'd be one glazed window looking towards Berrick Close. Is that correct? I'm talking about the two bedroom house, sorry.
Yes, so there's a couple of windows at ground floor level and then there's no window, oh, there's one window at first floor level. It's just towards the front of the property, bedroom two. It actually serves a non suite. So it's not likely that there'll be any, it's quite small and it's not likely that there'll be any overlooking towards the neighbouring property from that sort of window.
And the existing dwelling and the relation of the existing dwelling and the proposed new dwelling, there's no overlooking in the proposed new dwelling of the existing dwelling?
No, there is, there's no windows at first floor level on the proposed dwelling that could overlook the existing dwelling.
And what will the gap be between the proposed dwelling and the existing dwelling?
In terms of the measurement, is that what you're asking? I don't have that to hand. They are, they are reasonably close, but it, as we can see, there's no windows in terms of overlooking. And I think that would just be used as a sort of an access between front and rear of the, of the two properties. But I don't unfortunately have that specific measurement on the page, Chair.
Councillors, any further questions on the report? Councillor Cunningham?
Thank you, Chair. Catherine, in the update sheet, you have an additional condition would be added removing certain unregulated development from the site. Is that the whole site encompassing, encompassing both properties or just the new property?
Thank you, Chair. It's both properties. Apologies, I stand corrected. It's just the new property because the existing dwelling, as you, Miss Dickens rightly pointed out, you can't remove permitted development rights from an existing dwelling. But any, any works that they want to do within that boundary would come forward to planning application and would be assessed accordingly to what's, what's there at the time. Thank you.
And while we're on the update sheet, Cat, the condition two, that's what Mr Tyrrell described to us, that they're going to change the nature of the front boundary treatment. Is that what they're going to take the hedge down?
Yeah, the site plan that was submitted was a bit confusing in terms of being very clear on what was happening at the front boundary. So it had an appearance that the existing hedge was being retained and a fence put in front of it, whereas now we've got clarification, that's not the case. As Mr Tyrrell said, the fence will be erected, there'll be shrub planting to the front, climbers to the rear. So it was more just for a clarification of the labelling so that it's clear exactly what it is that will be happening on that front boundary.
Okay, thank you. So debate. Councillor Otten.
Thank you, Chair. So this is obviously a difficult one, but what I will say is that, given the comments of the inspector at the last refusal of the previous application, I think if we did decide to turn this down, which I don't think we have the time and reasons to do, but if we did, I don't think we would be likely to win another appeal because the inspector clearly indicated that he thought there was room on the plot, but not just for the application that was previous. And I am considering that I'm pleased that it's, it's a smaller dwelling that's proposed than new dwelling. And I'm also pleased that despite the fact that it's a large plot, that the proposal is not to knock down the existing dwelling, which happens so often. And given our climate emergency and the impact on the environment of knocking down perfectly good buildings, I'm pleased to see that the proposal is to, to repurpose or to amend the existing dwelling, as well as to make room for the, for the new proposed one. I consider that it's reasonable to fit it into that space. We face this sort of thing all over Winchester people wanting to build in very large gardens by modern standards and it's become, this is within the development area of the city and the presumption always has to be in favour of development where that fits in with our, with our planning policies. So, and I'm also interested to see and pleased to see the front proposal to change the hedge because it will, it will soften the approach and also be more in keeping with the, the new boundary treatment that we see at fifteen A next door across the hedge with the new development. So I think, given everything that we have been presented with today, on balance, although I can understand the concerns of neighbours and the trust and so on, I am content that this is within our planning rules and we should be supporting it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Bentham.
Thank you very much, Chair. I don't know the area very well, so I did spend a fair amount of time walking around. I found it very difficult to appreciate. I found it very difficult to appreciate what was the overriding housing style along that stretch of road. One thing that did stand out to me was the fencing, which looked quite different to the rest of the road, that's the fencing outside 15A, not to mention 15A itself, which looked very different to anything else in the road. Visibility from the street, well, difficult to see much over the hedge, so I can't see, you know, any objections from people saying the visibility of these two properties, as it would be, would be intrusive on the area or harmful to the area. I was a bit concerned really seeing that the proposal now puts a fence along there rather than the hedge, which I thought was quite an attractive hedge, although I appreciate what the agent said, if it's not in the greatest condition. But I cannot see any particular problem with these proposals at all.
Thank you. We seem to have lost plans, if possible. Can we just look at the one which shows the side roads, the Barrow Week Close and... Those are the applicant's slides, aren't they? But there was a slide which showed Barrow Week Close and the road the other side. Not to worry, I'll just, we've all seen it, there we are. So that's Barrow Week Avenue and Barrow Week Close. So it is tight, I think to build a new house in that space, but I think personally it is acceptable. It's been moved forward and there are no windows overlooking Barrow Week Close because I know that was a concern of the resident. And Barrow Week Close, of course, has had additions in spaces. And if you look at the road, well, the road is full of houses really next to each other, which is what the new house is going to be. We've spent some time talking about overlooking, and I'm satisfied there's not going to be any. And there's going to be hedging put at the front, a different frontage, and then we, one of the conditions on the update sheet is to remove permitted development rights. So I think the case officer has explained to us the difference between the inspector's refusal and the current application, and I shall be voting to approve it. Are we at that point? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favor, please, share.
That's nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So that application is approved. Thank you very much. It appears to be a short gap while we sanitize all the table and mic system. So good morning to the public who's joined us today. And could I just remind you about the instruction sheet? And it's very important that you've turned your mobile phone off or put it on silent. This application is being recorded and livestreamed, and a video recorder recording is also being made and will be added to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. And the fire evacuation procedure is on the front of the sheet, and we're not expecting any fire practices today. So if you hear the sound, the siren, then that is for real. So we are on agenda item nine, which is South Downs National Park, 21/03322FUL. It's that King George Farm Stakes Lane in Uffam, and it's the change of use of an existing welfare unit for temporary three-year period to house an agricultural manager. The case officer is Lisa Booth, and she will give us her presentation.
Thank you, Chair. King George Farm, which is the subject of this application, is located along Stakes Lane in Uffam. It's within the South Downs National Park. Access to the field is via a farm gate with crushed stone hard standing and a trap behind the field boundary. Field boundary hedge, and it leads to an existing animal and storage barn. There are other farm buildings, different ownership, to the south. King George Farm is owned by the applicant and his wife and extends to approximately 2.66 hectares. And in addition, they have another four acres, sorry, another 4.65 hectares of partial land occupied under grazing licence arrangements from family members. The proposal is for the change of use of an existing welfare unit for a temporary three-year period to house an agricultural manager. And it's a mobile home, which is measured 10.97 metres by 3.66 metres, and comprises two bedrooms, an office, shower, kitchen, dining, living area. The main issues for consideration are in relation to whether there is an agricultural need for workers dwelling and impact on character in periods of countryside. The applicant submitted a comprehensive planning statement and rural enterprise appraisal, which has been assessed in accordance with criteria containing policies SD32 of the South Downs local plan. And this has been assessed by an independent senior of the Royal Family, Brute Nolles. They've also visited the site. Just a little bit about the enterprise accordance with SD32. The applicant and his wife are new entrants into farming sector, both secured agricultural qualifications and started operating a small-scale agricultural business on family-owned land before acquiring King George Farm to develop their business further. They are both currently employed at land and farm country park and roles which include farmer and livestock as well as public interaction. They are currently repaying a loan required purchase at King George Farm, but otherwise funded the setup costs on their own savings. Details of the investment to date have been provided in the rural appraisal. The applicants have already made some connections in the locality for sourcing calves, which is their main business, King George Farm, which is beef and breeding calves. And it's considered that there is firm intention and ability to develop the business. The independent assessor is satisfied that the criteria has been met and that the applicant has submitted sufficient evidence to prove that there is an essential function in need and that on balance there is a justification for residential presence on site. There is no other residential accommodation in the local area that is able to fulfil their needs, yeah, but will fulfil the needs of the applicant. And there are no buildings on site suitable for conversion. The proposed mobile home has already been bought onto the site. Do you? Pictures. Let's get a picture. With our planning permission, and is currently used as a welfare unit, so they'll use it for toilet comfort breaks. And it's situated next to the existing animal storage barn towards the rear boundary. The design of the mobile home is as would be expected, and its grouping with the other agricultural buildings is not considered to be detrimental to its surroundings. There are trees to the rear and an avenue of new trees, as you can just see on the photograph, implanted along the access track, which will eventually birth screen the buildings with the road and on the distance views. There is also a new mature hedge along the road boundary, which also provides screening. Although it can be seen from some viewpoints, mostly due to its white colour, which makes it stand out more, it's not considered that it's detrimental to the character of the area. Just go back to the plan. The mobile home is surrounded by various agricultural buildings, and the nearest residential property is approximately 300 metres from the mobile home, so up north. And therefore it's not considered that there'll be any direct impact on residential amenity of those properties. The principle of the proposal is considered assessed by the stringent criteria of policy SD32 and has independently been assessed by a rural agent. For this reason and reasons outlined in the application is therefore recommended for approval, subject to the conditions that are set out in the report.
Thank you very much. So we move now to public participation, and we have one member speaker. It's Mrs Ally Harrison, who's going to read a statement. No, that's not correct, is it? No, it's not, worry. Anyway, you are reading out the statements on behalf of Mrs Ally Harrison. So welcome to the meeting today, and when you're ready, and you put the button on at the bottom of the microphone, when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you. As explained, Mrs Harrison lives with Mr Barsha at the house, which is to the north of the property. And she apologises for not being the ordinary here today due to business commitments. I'm reading a statement that she prepared. Objection to the change of use of an existing welfare unit for a temporary three-year period to house an agricultural manager. The views expressed here are shared by neighbours living in close proximity to the field owned by the applicant. Whilst we appreciate the challenges facing younger generations who wish to further develop their existing family farming business, we believe this application should not be approved. Number one, first and foremost, the mobile home was moved into the site several months ago without any planning permission. Why was this allowed to happen? It is a large, ugly and completely incongruous mobile home, very visible to any passerby and to residents in neighbouring and nearby properties. The applicant has also fitted a septic tank on site without planning permission. The views of Natural England are clear, that the applicant must clarify where waste or foul water will go and rerun any calculations for submission and approval. A final decision on approval by Winchester City Council must therefore be deferred until this data is available and formally assessed by Natural England. The business, number three, the business case associated with the current and future suckler herds is weak, and as identified by the independent consultant, does not identify all potential fixed costs. However, of potentially even greater significance is the production of substantial amounts of nitrates from the intensively raised suckler herds living in the sheds. I am unable to find any publicly available information on this, and therefore the total amount of nitrates arising from inigrees numbers of cattle and the temporary residency must be submitted and assessed by Natural England. This must be transparent and communicated to all relevant parties. Number four, the applicant has already been through one winter with a suckler herd and no overnight accommodation was needed. Therefore, there is no clear rationale for the proposed change of use. Number five, while we are grateful that there will be a condition applied that no external lighting is to be used on mobile home without planning permission, the lighting on the cattle sheds themselves are already proving to be deleterious and in contravention to the SDMP dark skies policies. There must be no further increase in lighting in this site. Number six, any approval for this change of use, if warranted, must insist on removal of the mobile before or on the given date as stated in the planning officer's summary. The planning officer has also clearly noted that this site is not suitable for permanent residency.
I'll have to stop you there, sorry. Okay, it's your time to have three minutes. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming along and reading the statement. It might be that the members have questions of clarification for you? No, seems not. So thank you very much, and we'll carry on with the discussion of the application.
Could you just turn your microphone off? Thank you.
Lisa, I don't think you wanted to add to the... So looking at the talk members, principle of development goes on three pages, I think, page 86, 87, and a bit on 88. So shall we start with our questions on principle of development? Could I just clarify, well, the procedure here that a mobile home was moved onto the site and was called or nominated a welfare unit, but the welfare unit is now not needed?
And I'm assuming it's going to be the same building, so obviously it's got toilet facilities, so they're just carrying using it. They actually got hired as a different uses of mobile home.
I'm just trying to understand why it was called the welfare unit and now it's for a manager to live in.
I don't know, it's unforcibly so, I'm assuming they're waiting for the helm of it.
Is it possible to get the picture of the mobile home? There we are. Which one is the mobile home?
The white, the white one.
The white one. Is that quite large for...
It's a pretty standard size for a mobile home, it's what you would expect.
Okay. Any other question on principle of development?
Thank you, Chair. Could just could you ask or find out what sort of intense farming is needed for a farmer permanently on site?
We have Brute Nolles supporting. Yeah, I was going to say, we're not experts on everything, that's why we hired Brute Nolles to look at it in detail and obviously they're the experts, so...
And why do you expect us to know that?
Difficult to go against Brute Nolles if they say there's a need for the manager to live there. But I understand your concern.
Chair, if it helps a bit as well, this is a temporary, this is a temporary application at this stage. And one of the conditions is that it's for three years. And the policy allows that, since we can test that further and check that there is that. I mean, the policy talks about that firm intention to develop and that need. And then when they come in, you know, in three years' time, presumably either to retain this for another temporary period or more likely to come in for a permanent dwelling, we will then further assess the business and see whether it's done what it said it would do. So it is a temporary interim arrangement to allow for that further assessment, because these businesses, when they are getting off the ground, it is that balance between, do you need to be on site to manage that business? And it's, you know, as Lisa said, we are experts, so we have engaged a rural expert who concludes that on balance there is a need for someone to be there. But it's temporary at this stage, as we can further test that. So, you know, there will be another application, I would expect, in three years unless the business doesn't continue.
So we need to make sure that our conditions are put there so that anything to do with the mobile home can be removed and nothing left in the three years is a failure.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Condition one does that it talks about a limited period to the eighteenth of November 2024, on a form which time mobile home should be removed and the land restored. Obviously, there's an opportunity for that to come in for another application and we'll test it at that time, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I understand the condition for three years, but it is associated with the business being run and possible, agreed to take into consideration before we go. What would happen if this does not last three years? Would the mobile home be allowed to stay on site or is it tied to the success of the business? Like I said, if it fails after a year, mobile home would be left on site. It is...
Chair, I think there's also an agricultural occupancy condition on there as well, which requires that the mobile home be occupied by somebody living in the locality and working in agriculture. So if it failed, these people wouldn't be able to remain there without being breached that condition.
Any further... Any further question?
Chair, I have a question on the next section, if I may.
Yes?
Yes.
We'll go on to the next section. Councilor Rutter?
Thank you. And the, looking at the mobile home, it is very obvious because it's painted bright white. Have we considered asking the applicant to paint it something a bit more disappearing into the landscape like green or grey or green, bluey, grey? So that it's not sticking out quite, like, sort of normal?
Yeah, I haven't, but as I say, if you can see on that picture there, they've planted trees and it is for a temporary period, so we've just sort of balanced it up really. So they've done a lot of planting. I mean, I can go back to them and ask them.
Given that it is for temporary periods and planting, yes, it takes time to be grown, whereas painting it is an instant, a temporary fix, if you like. Yeah. Got any condition details? That's all. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, Chair, can I just add on that before we go to Castle Pearce and forgive me? I think, I don't know what this is, this tree, this mobile home is. So I wonder if we could just suggest a condition along the lines of the details of some sort of mitigation, whether that's something applied to the surface or it painted? Because I don't know, you know, some of these plastics don't really accept, I don't know if it's plastic, which I can't add to this photo. But if we could just condition some of the asked for, either for it to be painted a more recessive colour or for it to be attached to it to sort of mitigate that a little bit. Obviously, there's a balance there between both. So you could delegate that to us if you were minded to approve it today. So maybe it's an appropriate condition, Chair.
Happy to do that, Chair, if that's okay.
Thank you. Sorry, Castle Pearce, I know you're waiting to ask a question. But on that note, the applications in the South Downs National Park are supposed to be landscape led. There's no way that that application, by planting a few trees on the edge of the track, is landscape led.
And one of the key, I think, well, the key sectors within South Downs National Park are farming, forestry and tourism. So there is some support for this. And obviously, we also have policy SD 32, so we have our own policies to support farming. Obviously, this is just, as we said before, it's a temporary, it's a temporary structure. So this is kind of tied really what temporary structure you can put there. And, you know, the normal temporary structures are a mobile home, just in terms of cost. And this is how they are built. And we, you know, we will see these across, across the South Downs and countryside in general. And they have, they have custard, yeah, countryside stewardship scheme. And the applicant's in the first year of that, so they're basically, they're part of the land. So it does say that achieving the vision for the South Downs, it comes hand in hand. So although they have this, they also have, they're part of the land, they plant new planted hedges and trees. So this is, the special qualities do not sit in isolation, but are interconnected with each other, forcing, helping and environmental shape by centres of farming and embracing new enterprise. And I think we just have to look at this as a temporary solution and anything that can further down the line that if it is acceptable or wants to be something more landscape-led. I think it would hesitate really on how much you can do. Also, they have planted as much as they can at the moment and continue doing this under the countryside stewardship scheme.
Thank you. I've just been waiting to speak. But that's all very laudable. But that mobile home, I do sit on the planning committee for South Downs National Park and I have read SD 32. But that mobile home is very visible in the landscape. And I don't know why they planted around, that's part of the stewardship scheme, but it doesn't lessen the impact of that mobile home. The colour is something, so perhaps when officers discuss the mitigation, they can come up with something which doesn't draw your eye to it. Because it is very obvious, large and obvious at the moment. And this, this application is not landscape-led, despite whatever laudable schemes they're involved in. And I know it's only temporary, but it's still there. Councilor Pearce, then you had asked.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I was going to ask you, this actually is a mobile home. I mean, designed, which I've never seen a mobile home looking like this. It reminds me of chicken farm, a shed you occasionally get, to somebody that attaches wheels to and says, well, it's a mobile home. Therefore, it's a loophole in the planning. It looks just like a general shed. So can we be assured this genuinely is a mobile home? I think, similar to the ones, for example, in Colton Convent, many, well, plenty around. That's one point. Second point is that if it is a mobile home, it's virtually impossible to paint another colour, because the material that they're made out of just don't take additional paint. You know, that's, they come in one colour or two colours and that's the way they are, the material's on them. But as I said, I questioned initially, is this a mobile home? And must it be in this location if it stands up to...
Well, that's what they have applied for. So I'm assuming it is, it may be that it's been converted, it is mobile, it's portable and it would be home. So it may be not your traditional, as you would see on, you know, someone living in full time.
Most of what I would say, but that's not mobile. There's a difference in planning between portable building and mobile building.
Chair, I'm reading the proposal description. It doesn't actually refer to mobile home. It refers to a change of use of an existing welfare unit for a temporary three-year period to house an agricultural manager. And although I think later on there is mention of mobile home, in fact, the application is basically for temporary agricultural workers accommodation and that's what is on site.
You're literally talking about a mobile home.
As I said, I suspect it probably is a mobile home, but it doesn't really matter as long as it's temporary and can be removed from site to the end of three years.
Yeah, my concern is the visibility of it and the fact that it doesn't accord with South Downs policy of being landscape-led. But hopefully, we can sort that out with a different condition. Any further questions? That brings us to debate. So I will contribute to debate. I think I have the time, really. A, it's temporary, it's a three-year commission, condition one says that quite obviously. And Bruton Knowles, who are the expert, have supported the need for this. So I know it's annoying that people bring in mobile homes or whatever it is without planning permission, but that's what they're asking for now. I've expressed my irritation that it's so visible in the South Downs National Park. But I think our hands are tied really, given that it's not going to be there forever. And it's got support from the experts on farm operations, so. Councilor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. And yes, I would support all that and just emphasise the fact that I do think that there must be something that we can come up with as a condition to make it disappear more into the landscape and be less of a sore thumb sticking out. I think once that is done in whatever way, this will be as an appropriate condition, I will be supporting the application, Chair.
So I think that's it for contributions to debate. So this application has been recommended for approval. And with the additional condition that we will somehow suggest a mitigation measure to make the building or whatever it is, structure, less prominent in the landscape.
Chair, having had a look at it and been picking up on Castle Pearce's point, I think in conditions one and two on the paper, we might change the word of the, we have referred to mobile home, I think that's what we mean, because they're pretty standard, isn't it? But if we can, if we can find an appropriate set of words, the unit that's proposed, we did use that phrase further down in condition four. So if on condition one and condition two, we can remove the word mobile home and call it the agricultural unit or building, we'll find an appropriate word for that with your permission. And I've just been trying to sketch out a suggested condition, something along the lines of the temporary agricultural unit will find the right words here, but it should not be occupied for details of recessive colour to be applied to the walls of the unit or cladding with a recessive colour material. And then development carried out within a specified timeframe, Chair. So if you would delegate that to me and Chair, perhaps to finalise the exact wording with something along those lines.
The problem being, it is already occupied, I believe. No?
No, it's not, Chair. It's used as a welfare unit at the moment, which has been used for day kind of facilities, that the proposal would be, that it'd be used for sort of permanent, albeit for a temporary three-year period, for residential overnight accommodation. That's my understanding.
So with the addition of the condition which Julie's just wrote out, it's recommended for approval, all those in favour of it show?
That's eight, Chairman.
And those against?
Assumptions? One.
So that application is approved. And that is the end of the morning session. We're slightly ahead of ourselves because we anticipated finishing time was 12.15, but in fact, it's 5.12. And we will reconvene for the last two applications, the one that's here at four, at two o'clock. Thank you very much, everybody. We worked through it. No, not on our share, it's not on...
No, we can be here. I'm going to be here.